All this meeting order, joint meeting of the Carroll County Council and Commissioners. I assume we're here to discuss the jail. Josh, you just handed this sheet, this several sheets out here to us. Why don't you tell us what we're looking at here?
Yeah, so this is the report given to us by Baker Tilly in November, November 18th meeting. We're, I don't know if it was November 18th meeting, but the document is titled November 18th. It discusses the previous jail bid and also speaks to our capacity to cash flow debt service from the existing actways that we have. Hold on, Tim Reckle is going to join us.
He came, yeah. Confirmed that there today through the end of baseball.
Hey, Tim. So, I've got you on here and we just called the meeting order.
Alright, thanks so much.
You don't need to run, Tim.
We're starting off this, but I know that what initiated this, the first one, is we came back to the council and asked, okay, what will you fund? What are we looking at now? What do we have to get under to make this thing work? And that's where I still am, is where do we have, where do we have to be? And I'm, I'll tell you right off the bat, I'm, I'm very unoptimistic, pessimistic about our chances now because of how the building prices and something just skyrocketing. We were talking about that in a little group here earlier, was, you know, we can take a tuba course going up like three times since last fall. I don't know if we got a chance here. That's, that's my question.
So, so to answer your, your basic question, I guess.
Yeah.
The, forgive me, I got some notes here, forgotten. Okay, so on, and I got an email from Matt Eckertly as well, just to confirm that I was reading this correctly. So if you look at the, at scenario two in this document.
Page what?
Uh, it would be on the sixth page.
Second page.
Sixth.
Six.
Page title, yeah, title of page six. And then into page seven is kind of a simpler illustration there. But you can see that, in this scenario, there was, the total was roughly eighteen point two million dollars. Or, excuse me.
I'm not for sure.
Excuse me, scenario one is page. Okay. It is one oh seven and I'm calling to order the meeting of the Carroll County Council in joint session with the county commissioners. So, excuse me, it was page, page five here. So, what, what they had said to us was that on the eighteen point, or eighteen point eight million dollar total project, that we would have to bring cash of five point four million dollars for our debt service to work. So relatively simple math to revert that. So our total bonding capacity of our current tax load off of the jail lit tax is twelve million seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. That's, that's how much project it will cost. That assumes that we spend all of our cash, that we have saved both in the jail lit and, and the two million dollars that we decided to buy originally for the jail project. So that math moves around a little bit because as over the months, that jail tax has collected. So that number may be fluctuating a little bit. But that's the amount of debt service that we can pay with the amount of tax revenue that we collected. Right. And so that's also assuming that we're spending the.
The cash flow.
Two-ish million dollars. So that basically puts it right back where we were before, about fifteen million dollars.
So we'd get two million-ish and you just mentioned that we would, we would have to come up with five a year.
So that was for us to be able to fund the debt service on the eighteen million dollar project. We would have to bring five million dollars in cash.
Okay, so we don't have it. So that puts us to fifteen million, that's where you get the fifty million.
Yeah, backing up from that number to what are, what we can actually pay for, that's what we can pay for.
Okay.
So fifteen is the answer to our question.
That's a part you'd have to go on.
We're three million or less down, right?
More.
Can't remember what the bottom head, what was the price of the jail we had designed to bring it together?
Eighteen million eight hundred eighty-three thousand.
I just want to look over.
Yeah, sorry. That's the all-in.
Was that the hundred and twelve though, or a hundred and ten?
Hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight. So my suggestion was, was asking was, keep the same design, but don't fully install all the beds needed. Put at least, at least eighty or so in it and then in the future it'd be easier to add on to the jail. I don't know if that was possible. Would you come up with that? Did you ever decide on how many beds we can actually cut back to save money or?
Well, we were at, give you a quick math here.
It was like a hundred and three, a hundred and three thousand a bed, I believe it was.
We had four, four pods of sixteen, I think, were cells. And then the balance of it were dorms. But I think, yeah, then we had an alternate, I'm sorry, we took, we took out one of the, one of the four cell day, cell pods and changed that into a dorm setup. So we would be at forty-eight cell beds under the scenario that was just big. So I, I don't know if you want to go down with fewer cells than that, but I mean, we can, we can do that. That's, and have that come in, you know, be brought in in the future. That's getting, that's getting down, knocking down the first two cell beds.
If you would, explain the difference between an actual cell bed and a dorm style facility? Because if I understand correctly, dorm style facilities, not fully, I don't think any of us want a full dorm style facility. But isn't dorm style less expensive to build?
Oh, certainly less expensive. The cell itself is the, in this case, they're pre-manufactured steel cells. So you can have that, it's, restrooms and showers kind of out in the open as opposed to, not in cell, but there's some pre-done, pre-bad metal showers, you know, like that. But the, the, it's, it is quite a bit less expensive, although what you don't get is the ability to classify the different offenders and the level of offenses that they, and the amount of security you need amongst the inmates themselves. So it's just, I mean, folks would say, you know, if you've got to watch, you have to watch all the people that are just out in the open and not locked up at night. I mean, it's a constant vigil has to, has to happen in the dorm setup. But in, in certain classifications, you know, those people are fine to be in a dorm setup. But some people aren't. So having, having the number of, number of beds available in cells is fairly fair.
So the, the original bid, we had eighteen million plus, only included forty-eight cells? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, we were, originally we had sixty-four beds in cells with thirty, forty-eight. Forty-eight beds in dorm. And that was to cut down on the price a little bit. We had one of those pods, one of the sixteen bed pods go to dorms. So then the number became forty-eight and that was lost. So I think we ended up with forty, or sixty, sixty beds in dorms. So forty-eight to sixty was the ratios, cell beds to dorm beds.
Do you understand the difference when you say on the classification?
Oh, yeah, 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 I think it's the classification of everything.
We can commit with the guy that just prevented murder.
Right.
So you've got to keep those kind of people separated.
And it, it helps with, you know, you've got male, female. So you, you want to have as many classifications as you can, just so you don't eat up one whole pod with one particular type of person, say. It's just better to, better to have more classifications as possible, so.
So in a scaled-down version to try to hit the fifteen million number, you're suggesting forty-eight beds, right?
Well, where we were, that's where we were.
Oh, that was the original. So what, what are you suggesting for a scaled-down version to try to hit the fifteen million? Drop them back to thirty-four cell?
I hate, I hate to do that, but I mean, I understand where we are. And we can't take, we can't take an alternate. We can try to look at different alternates to try to, you know, cut a little, little more cash out of the program. So that could be taking one, one more pod and making a dorm for temporary basis until, you know, you need to go and add more cells. And then that's done by the, we leave out areas where you can leave out or take the wall out. It's pretty, pre-structured, so by pulling out a portion of the outside wall, you can bring the cells and move them into place. So it's figured ahead of time, so you're not wasting a bunch of money for regenerating structure.
How much is, how many people are there following you?
Well, there's, in the cell pods, there were sixteen.
So the dorms can be changed over to?
They could be changed over. We would leave an opening, a place where an opening could be made in the wall to slide the cells in in the future, which is what we did on one of the pods for this last bid. So one, one of the pods, because we, like I said, we originally had four pods of sixteen cells, or sixteen beds, eight cells. But we took one of those pods and changed it to dorm. With future capability, change back the cells.
Does that take anywhere with the special cells, like your padded cells and your maximum hearing?
No, well, any of the, any of the three remaining cell pods are, they're maximum or minimum, however you would want to use them. They're, they're all the same. But the padded cells are in the intake processing area and those remain.
How many holding cells are up there if I remember?
I think we were at two, we had two padded and I believe maybe three, three additional, maybe four. There was an isolation cell also for negative pressure cells for communicable diseases.
So these numbers were pulled from last year. We're going to have a little bit of additional funds going in for this year. And there is no discussion of pulling anything from rainy day or anything, or maybe another million dollars with it?
It's feasible, I just reported on what we can pay for the tax.
So if we have another estimated seven hundred and fifty thousand on this year, if we were to pull another million from that, it's almost another two million. I think that should probably should be looked at. I just don't think we're going to, I just don't think we're going to get.
What we need?
What you need for, if you go back to numbers of thirteen, fourteen.
Because we're at the same goal.
Yes.
The only thing we're doing is we'll have a new structure, but we still have the same problem with being in its capacity. And shipping them on. Now, I said something about edit funds and you made a good point, that's a commitment for so many years. But what if we do it for a couple of years? Would that help the, the cost on the cash on hand to move forward? Because we've got two hundred and forty thousand from last year, we got about two forty from this year that we was going to give the highway, but it wasn't put in that edit, can that be used?
And what I had said to him was that if you guarantee for the next twenty years that we're going to take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we normally would give the highway, which we do not now, that is a long time to give away your edit funds for something that can be used in our, to enhance your community. I mean, if it was five years, I think it's a story. Don't make that money for twenty years, because that is not a good idea.
I didn't take it that way when you brought that up.
There's a handful of ideas that I have that, that, and we'll look through how we can possibly raise more revenue. But primary one being is the, the, all of the infrastructure that runs along Categor One Hundred goes to site. I can't remember the exact number of the bit package, but let's say it's a million or a million-two, something like that. The vast majority of that is infrastructure, it's the good long Categor One Hundred. The site were like, for the whole Fulton County Jail project, it was only like a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars. Ours was like a million or a million-two. That site on the south side of Categor One Hundred, ours is a designated future development for the RDC. They already have a plan put together for that site. So any infrastructure that, they would have had to have built all of this infrastructure anyway to develop that section. So if, if we can have a conversation that we already see about anticipating, and something they were going to do anyway, timing's not great because.
Well, that's what we, we thought too, if they realize you need it.
Yeah, have them at least pay half. Well, I, I mean, I, I think half isn't going to get us very far, but you know, if, I don't know, it was a conversation we need to have with them. But I would say, you know, if our, our ass was a million dollars of, of the RDC, that makes a material difference to the jail.
But then you're looking at bumping this up to seventeen, nine?
That would be sixteen.
Well, I'm saying if we took a million, come possibly rainy day.
Yeah, I.
We'll have another seven hundred and fifty thousand from this year coming in.
This is for me.
And, I mean, so you take, that's approximately two and a half million more dollars and then if you go to RDC, then that's, that's pretty much, and that's, that's a dent.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can look at any number of funding opportunities. I think a million dollars is potentially doable across all of our things. But like, you know, there's, there's some operational things that need to be, before we, before we look to how we spend one county dollars, we need to align our, the cost of the project with benchmarks from across the state. So like if we take out, you know, this sewer component, which many jails don't have to do because they're on site, that's basically shovel ready. You know, that hundred and thirty or whatever the number was, thousand dollars per bed. You take that over a hundred beds, that's a million dollars, let's just say, just easy math. And so then you're down to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a bed, you know, in the state range is, you know, a hundred and, let's say a hundred to a hundred and ten million dollars, a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars a bed would be like, we'll call it, call it norm. The previous construction manager had paid five percent of the many jobs that have been done that are two and a half percent. So two and a half percent on, say, fifteen million dollars is real money. So, you know, if we start stacking dimes here, you can, you can get to another, another number, but it can't be just all like more bucks of money, there's got to be.
Well, we talked to other lots back there and they can, the site manager and everything, they can do it all. But you know, with the fee to be, the guy for the ditch.
Can I ask why you want to do that?
Just to say why.
How much money is it?
We, if they get us a figure.
I mean, that's certainly.
Well, yeah, may or may not say.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, my biggest front, my biggest concern when I heard it was that he actually said, we could be out there once a week, maybe twice every other week, you know, I can't be out there all the time. I think this project warrants somebody being on top of it and out there all the time. For a measly possibly three hundred thousand dollars. I don't, I don't think it's just, I think it's a very important part.
They're out there once a week anyway, but then they would put someone else down there a couple more times. Said to be down there three days out of five.
I think I missed that part.
Well, I said we could be there as often as you wanted. Typically, we're there once every two weeks is typical by, by contract. But we could be there, you know, once the other week, I mean, if you wanted us there more often. I mean, it's just a matter of.
There's no way to quantify how much that costs them?
Yeah, you could, if you ask how oft, or told us how often you want us there, we would, we could tell you how much.
So you're going to pay for it either way. It doesn't matter who does it.
But, I mean, the difference between two and a half and five percent is, let's just say it's fifteen, because it's easy math.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's off the top four hundred thousand dollars, just by the construction management. So, you know, you take possibly working on the RDC. We've had many here. No, I'm saying just going to five to, probably have to, for four point three, or four one seven five two, point two five. Yeah, they, they want it there.
Again, you have to hire the right constructor.
Because they can also be your site manager. That's what I'm saying, yeah. I mean, there's plenty of them. Right, that's what I'm saying. A good construction manager will pay for themselves. Truth.
I guess I was under the assumption when we met with, and Tobin, the, with our loan guy, and I guess I felt that was the direction it was all heading, or we're going to get another company to come in and share. Now, what, what all of a sudden switched directions to where they're not going to hire a construction manager? What caused that?
I gotta change my mind, yeah, on that.
We was just trying to get, uh, to both of you guys to enjoy the date. Last thing we want to do is tax the people more money, at least.
So which way are you leaning now?
So which way are you wanting to?
Yeah, kind of trying to help us understand which way you're leaning now.
Okay, I would lean to hire a construction manager, is what I would, would be my choice now. We also have an option that hasn't been discussed at all, and is we have a very highly qualified engineer on staff. He is not so much hands-on looking underneath each truck and everything as our last engineer was. As far as engineering and doing construction, with building construction, so you could make an argument, he's as good as anybody.
What would you, how do you see that actually playing out? I, I can't quite picture it, help me, help me picture it, Bill.
All, all I can tell you is that I had a conversation with him for a couple of minutes after a commissioner meeting, when he was sitting here, and he says, I will assist you in any way you want to assist. He said, I can do construction management, I'm already here, whatever you want me to do.
He could be on-site another day. Okay.
He can stop and visit.
Josh, does that do anything for you?
I mean, I mean.
Has he built a jail before and does he have experience? I am leaning for someone that has done this job before and that has experience and that knows what is going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of people that have done a lot of jails in the last ten years that are out there to discharge two and a half percent to do the job and two and a half percent on this project is, you know, is already, I think, because I mean, I was on the last. So, I mean, that, that's.
So that's what you'd like to see, Josh?
I would like, I would like a professional, proper, I mean, a construction manager. So that would be my preference. They can also.
I would also, I mean, I don't care which one it is, as long as Tobin has researched them and gives them high and we know that other sheriffs have, have their built, jails built by them.
Do you have Frankford's going for us right now?
Frankford just announced they're going to new jail two. It's police station.
And you know, when you said that your idea has not changed per se, and you want to get a construction manager, are you open to listening to anybody else other than CCI? Okay, alright.
I don't agree with my way with CCI because we had a committee put together and just like she wanted, somebody had the experience. That, that went on for three years. They did this, they went, they went around, a couple of them were already passed away, I believe. Others on that. They went around, looked at the jails, studied our jails, studied whatever they're doing anyway. They're the ones who suggested these people to us, that's why we went with them, because if not, we just wasted those people's time for nothing. That's why we went with them.
They're no longer on the table though, so let's don't spend time talking about CCI, right? From what I said, they don't want to work with your penny now, is what I. Okay, let's don't bring them in, please, we don't have time for it, my fault.
That's why we went the way we did.
Okay.
So I guess our next step is to close out the beds for construction managers. Or we hire them with, you know, the construction manager, and let me advise, we all agree. For them to be out there. I think if we stay with the same.
Steve, just, just to be clear, we, we would not be, do the exact same thing as a construction manager. I don't want to make it sound like we're going to be a construction manager for a lot less, because we did, that's not what we do. But, but we can be on-site more and, and, you know, review the construction and that more often than, than we'd want. review the construction and that more often than, than we would normally. Like I said, in what I brought up a few weeks ago when I was here, uh, you know, many, many projects have been done without a construction manager. It's just the contractor and the architect that, that it gets done. You know, but, uh, but if the comfort level is with the, with the CM though, by all means, we can do that. We don't wanna, we don't wanna say that we can do exactly what they would because we, we.
If you were sitting up here, would you hire a construction manager?
If I had money issues, no. That's.
Because the construction.
I, I think there's, I mean, there's, there is money in there that, uh, is, is, you know, on top of what it would cost to do the jail, um, under regular construction, under regular jail construction. In, in my mind, I mean, there's, there's gonna be a, a fee charge to be a construction manager.
Like two and a half to three percent is fairly chivalrous amount, or?
Yes. I'm here, you know, there's numbers all over the place and, and depending on how you do the math, that's, again, that's not really what we do. So I'm not, I'm not gonna say that I know exactly what everyone's charging.
And Bill, if you remember right, we, we brought you all this information about the percentages of the different ones that were charged around. And we had told you that it was extremely high of what CCI was charging. So it's not like when the council were arguing back and forth, but it wasn't like we just said that that was too much.
I think you do have to, there is a difference in how a construction manager agency charges versus how a construction manager as a constructor is charged. There are, there are two different, I mean, there's, there's lots of money all over the place and, and so there can be money in different, uh, different piles that someone can get paid out of. And it may seem like your fee is less. And that's, and that's just between the two. I mean, that's why it's so hard to compare. That's why it's, it's very hard to compare. It's, it's whether you want a guaranteed, uh, construction cost or whether you want someone who is, is more or less just administering contracts amongst all the subcontractors. That's, that's kind of two different methods, but to compare them exactly, one is this percentage and the other one's this percentage comparative.
Well, we, I personally would like to stick with something not to exceed, right, Josh?
Given the, given the amount of risk that we have and how extended we are on this project, I mean, overruns are illus. So, so we gotta, I mean, we, like, any risk we can take out in terms of overruns or, you know, putting that risk on the contractor instead of putting it on us is.
And so that would be a construction manager of risk?
At risk.
Okay, so you guys understand that's what we see as the best source of construction manager of risk. We still wanna go that way, basically, at least I do, everybody.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what two and a half percent has been from, I mean, probably six or ten jails that I've looked at, they're all on that, two to two and a half.
Okay, so, so we're in agreement. Bill, is that okay with you guys? Are you okay with construction manager?
I have a question. I see you nodding your head a lot.
Me?
Can I, no. Can I ask, you are, you look like you know quite a bit about this. Is it, when they're asking for a construction manager, is it possible to say, this is what we wanna pay, that we'll, that we'll pay two and a half percent for a construction manager? Whoever wants to bid on it can bid on it and whoever will not take that, don't bid on it? Is that a possibility? I mean, I'm not sure if you are.
I, I'm Mike Miller. I'm with YGAN Construction. We are a construction manager, general contractor. So a lot of this is familiar, um, and a lot of questions you're asking are true and real. I don't think legally you can say, and I, I would have to confirm with an attorney, you can say, we want this to be two percent or two and a half percent or less.
I'm just thinking time-wise, there's no sense of, if you, if we know we're not gonna take a construction management bid of four or five percent, it's a waste of the time to bid on it.
But I, I will also say that two and a half to three and a half percent for a fifteen million dollar project is fair. I've seen it from our company, I've seen it from other companies in the past, so I don't think that's out of the question. I can't guarantee that you'll see that in an RFP response, but I don't think it's out of the question. I don't think you're talking a unreasonable number that you would see four and five percents again. Not saying you won't, depending on the number of individuals or companies that would turn a request in.
So your company would like to come to the table possibly to bid?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah.
I've, I've been in and out of these meetings for the last two plus years, not every week. I've got a couple other counties, Long County Road, or State Road twenty-four that we're hitting. Um, but we're working on four jails right now throughout the state, so this.
Say the county name one more time.
YGAN?
Okay.
Construction.
You're, you're the GC on.
We're at Huntington. We're at Huntington as the GC. We are at Cass and Fulton in bid package rolls, under a CM. And then we're down in Henry County in Newcastle as a CM, as an agent. So that's different than the CM at risk that you guys would be going, and I would recommend for your guys, that risk makes a lot of sense. That was just the way that county decided to, to move forward.
And just so you know, we're doing, or YGAN's working on, on Henry and Cass and Fulton, all of which we've done. So, you know, we're obviously very familiar with YGAN construction work all the time.
So Mike, what, if you were giving us advice right now, what would be the next step that we would take to pursue bidding this jail?
Yep. I, I think number one, work with Elabada to make sure you have the program in place. Whether that's dropping a couple, I mean, there's that fine line that the sheriff's gonna say at a certain point, it probably doesn't make sense. So I think those would be wise words of wisdom to listen to, because there's that cost component, but then at the same time, you don't wanna build something just to build something. To appease the taxpayers and then all of a sudden you have a sheriff that's really in the same boat that it was before something was built. Um, so try to find that. Medium that's very difficult. I get it. Um, and then send out an RFP that, again, everybody that is by law wants to take a look at it. Can look at it and obviously if you, if you need help with that or ideas of what an RFP, I'm happy to provide you a couple that we've submitted on and can show you the, again, the counties, because it's, it's public information. So it's information that we've, we've bid on maybe through Elabada or through other counties, so it's not anything that's private or anything like that. And see where it's at. But again, I don't think you're, I, I think that's, and I think too, probably between commissioners and council, find out what that, that dollar amount is. If there's rainy day money, if there's other money potentially that you can find a squeeze maybe to sixteen, sixteen and a half, understanding that the eighteen eight's too high, but what is that fine line to where? And then, and at least in the RFPs that we've seen, we've seen that number, right? We have sixteen million.
I think with that number being so close, we know we can't build an eighteen million dollar jail. We know we cannot build a fourteen million dollar jail. You're not gonna get nothing. So that number's in there. I mean.
So how far over was we with Jack, with CCI? You had five percent in the jail. That was at eighteen lot, eighteen three?
Almost nineteen, eighteen eighty-three.
Eighteen eighty-three.
Eighteen eighty-three. So.
So.
You said that the Jack would've been four hundred thousand more and we was only over budgeted three hundred thousand? Did I hear that right?
Uh, over budgeted four million.
Over four million. That's where Michael came in, because I thought it was only three, four hundred thousand.
But like I was saying before, you can work with the RDC, you pull something from here, you get your construction manager cost down, there's.
There's no single one. I mean, the, the, the bid package that came through last time, um, and I, I look at Fulton County a lot, because it's gonna be the closest to us. The Fulton County jail is a hundred, mm, let's say a hundred and ten-ish thousand dollar bed. We're a hundred and thirty-ish thousand dollars a bed, if you'll put this out. Yeah, but also there's other jails that are twice the size of the Fulton County jail, that are at a hundred and ten thousand dollars a bed. I mean, this jail, I don't know that I agree with the RDC, but it's definitely different. There is a difference, obviously, but like not. Can't build a four hundred room jail for a hundred and one thousand a bed and then want two hundred per bed, a hundred, well, ten thousand a bed.
The gentleman from Garmon that came in and talked to us told us, the smaller you build, the more expensive it is.
Well, there, there is some truth to that, but not that a hundred and thirty thousand isn't reasonable. And if we begin to break down the data about how much electrical cost per bed, how much lighting cost per bed, I think there's some outliers in the construction management, in the bids that came out of that, that, that we can have better results there. So, so let's, I mean, you start stacking pennies here, right? If we can, if we cut four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars out of the construction manager piece, if, if the RDC comes up with a million dollars, if, you know, another half a million or something comes out of bid packages, you know, you're two million dollars, you down to a sixteen eight and we didn't really touch the project in any material way. But, you know, it's, it's, all those things have to have, no one of those things, I think, is a problem.
Question about the new grounds back here. Since we took bids, if we read it, how much higher is our bid's gonna go this time?
Yeah, that's long.
I mean, they would be higher. I, I, I'm not gonna say it's two percent or, I, but it would be higher. I mean, it's another five months down the road.
See, when I go in, when I go into Lowe's or Home Depot or something, this is a person, I was a big, I just see outrageous amounts of money. And, uh, I, I think the money we will fade by doing all this stuff, we lost. On the time we lost here and on the bids we had, I think we, we're not gonna save any money over what we're doing and we are months and months behind. Of course, none of us knew
This is what happened.
That the economy was gonna take such a big shift as it has. We thought it would. We were worried about it happening that way. But I get, I think our worst scenarios has come true.
I would probably concur there, Commissioner Brown. Josh, I hear what you're saying. How I typically would caution the client is especially early in this process, of just trying to find savings to where the assumption or the thought process is, there's bids out there that we could save a dollar. I would just, based on what we're seeing right now, we just got information a couple of weeks ago that steel is not only tripling and quadrupling, but it's going from thirty to sixty days to a hundred and twenty days out. So things like the, the volatility right now that we're seeing, it's, it's, it's not Carol County, it's not, it's just across, it's across the board. So the concern that I hear in terms of pricing, yeah, we get multiple three, four, five, six bids in each bid package. I'm not concerned about the, the bid coverage. The problem is if they're each twenty percent higher than what you saw in the fall, it's not gonna matter. We can still take the lower and the lower is twenty percent higher than what it was in October, November. And that's, you know, unfortunately, what you said, Commissioner Brown, that you're sitting here and you've lost the time and you're in no better position today than you were six, eight months.
And, and the money, we, we spent about, what, four hundred thousand roughly at least to bid the jail out last night? How much we pay Kraus, I mean?
Well, his total, his total fees are fifty thousand. And then his total fees were fifty thousand, but then we put all of his pre-construction.
The rest of that stuff has to be done anyway. I mean, it's, it was prep work, it was prep work for the jail, no matter what.
Was, was that gonna have to get done again?
So we only pay fifty, so to put it out to bid again, it'd be another bill.
What's the bill we have on the ground now?
We have, um, six thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cents that we need paid. So what's a possibility? I mean, do you have to put it out to bid or can they just pick a?